Good evening, everyone. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Let's start off with roll call, please.
Councilmember Bozick.
Here.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Conover.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
And Councilmember Whitten.
I am here.
Seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up, we're looking for a motion to approve the council minutes for June 26, 2018.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Ms. Vicki, first reading, please.
Notice to taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations, notice is hereby given to taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet in the Porter County Government Administration Building at 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso, Indiana, on August 28 at 5:30 PM to consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the county budget for the year 2018 and to transact any further business which might come before the council. General fund, longevity, $100,000. Local roads and streets, fund 1169, a total of $1,050,000. Highway fund, 1176, a total of $355,000. Recorder's perpetuation fund, 1189, $8,500. Riverboat fund, 1191, longevity, $140,000. FICA, $10,710. PERF, $15,680. Surveyor perpetuation funds, 1202, $11,000. Prosecutor deferral fund, 2501, a reduction of $3,776. Memorial Opera House Humanities Grant Fund, 8156. Travel, $100. Postage, $150. Contractual, $4,750. 93.268 Health Immunization Grant Fund, 8205. Hourly reduction of 93. FICA reduction of 146. Office supplies reduction of 1,029 and 24 cents. Medical and dental supplies reduction of 751. Training and ed reduction of 7,386.58 postage, reduction of 35.60. And other equipment reduction of 15 cents. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have a right to be heard their own. The additional appropriations as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken, signed Vicki Urbannick, Auditor of Porter County, published in the Chesterton Tribune on August 17, 2018.
Thank you, Vicki. Well done, Vicki.
Thank you.
All right. To start this evening, we're going to start with our E-911. We've got our Executive Director, Mike Brickner. Got some awards to performance, excellent service and performance recognition awards. Distribute.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to have this opportunity to present some very outstanding work our telecommunicators performed. And I think we all agree that when people are doing outstanding work, it's always nice to be able to do recognition in public. And I can't ask for a better form than this. I appreciate this. Appreciate you having Sunday agenda. What I'd like to do is, well, we may have Sandra and everybody, can you kind of lead everybody up and just stand here and we'll kind of have you come up. Scott, I'll have you come up in just a minute. I'd like to just start out by saying that our dispatchers at Porter County 911, they handle about 500 calls a day. And at any very time, you know, any incident can come in, occur that they have to handle. And I'm very honored to be able to say that within the last year, you know, my eyes have been opened, this type of jobs that they really perform here in Porter County, we're very fortunate to have some outstanding employees who don't really get to see a face with a voice, a voice, you know, coming from law enforcement, the police, firefighters, very visible public safety officials, not just in the county but throughout the state or anywhere really, where we really don't get to see the people that are the initial, really the initial call takers that get everything going. And it's our 911 dispatchers. But anyway, I don't want to take up too much time. Gina, can you help come up, like, have some awards, like, presented to these fine people? And Gina, our Assistant Director's been helping out. What I'd like to start off doing is just kind of describing the incident that we're going to be talking about and kind of give a brief synopsis as to what happened in reference to this ceremony here tonight. I put this font on number 12. I still need the glasses. Okay. Just a brief synopsis as to what occurred. On July 31 of this year, Chase Bank in Portage called our 911 center and reported an armed robbery that had just occurred. Once we received the call, the call was dispatched within seconds. And during this time, continuous valuable information was being broadcast and assembled to Porter's police by our 911 dispatchers in reference to suspect information. Within two minutes, Porter's police initiated a traffic stop on the suspect vehicle and subsequently arrested the armed robber without incident. The person that was arrested was also learned was responsible for an armed robbery that had just occurred approximately 45 minutes earlier in Michigan City. This person was taken in custody and money was recovered at the scene. I had to really stress that teamwork in our 911 center is crucial, especially during high priority incidents such as this. And our dispatchers, these dispatchers standing behind you perform and work together as a team of lawlessness. During this high stress incident, our dispatchers continued to respond to an additional 20 calls that were coming in that were handled by them with professionalism and compassion. All of these calls were unrelated to the armed robbery. I said this many times before, especially through the last year, and I'm going to repeat it again, that our 911 dispatchers, they are the unsung heroes of public safety. You don't get to see their faces, you don't get to read about them in the headlines, but they are the backbone of our county's public safety. So it's my honor, really, for their outstanding work regarding this incident, again, it's my honor and privilege to present Porter County 911 Center's Honorable Mention Award, which is for exemplary work going above and beyond, to the following dispatchers, Lindsey Lloyd, Barbara Evans, Roberta Pollak, Jessica Stricker, can't be here, and the shift supervisor, who was really the conductor, the team leader, Sandra Delales. Congratulations. Again, thank you very much. Outstanding job. And thank you. And I just have one more presentation before we conclude. Scott? Want to state, you see I heard it, Scott? Looks like you've got something else. No? You sure? Okay. Well, this is a, this award is a little bit different. I think it's just as important. Scott Fleckner, who is standing here, had the privilege on July 30 to take a phone call. Again, you never know what the call's been entailed. A young woman who had pulled over and was getting ready to deliver her own baby. This was in Valparaiso, and she made a call, talked to Scott on the phone, said, you know, "I'm delivering my baby." Scott talked her through that and stayed on the phone with her the entire time until police officers arrived. He said it was one of the Capitol officers who freaked out, didn't know what to do. Okay, well, that figures. But anyway, what we have is an award, it's called the Stork Award, for dispatcher that is able to do what Scott performed by telephone with this, with this young lady. I see your wife and son here. This is not, this is not the baby. This is Scott's family. But I'd like to present Scott with the Stork Award, and he was given a, it's a, it was a boy, a blue stork pin that he can wear proudly. But we're very proud of Scott and congratulations. Before he sits down, is that, and not to put a damp on this all, this is outstanding, very proud of him, but just to kind of give an idea of what these dispatchers, what they do on a daily basis, and they never know what they're going to encounter, being the additional voice on the phone when somebody calls. I'll just want to share with the group, kind of give an idea, Scott delivered this, taught this lady to delivering a baby, and it wasn't about four or five days later. Scott was a dispatcher that the conductor talked to, the conductor that was riding the train that struck the road in Portage. So he went from delivering a baby a few days earlier to taking that phone call. And he handled that with professionalism. Couldn't be more proud of him. So thanks very much. Thanks for the hard work.
Thank you all. Next up, we have our General Courts, Roger Bradford. I'll make a motion to approve the $400 transfer. For the first and second, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we've got Circuit Court Judge Harper.
I'll make a motion to approve the $100 transfer.
You have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next. Say, Mr. Surveyor. Got our surveyor.
How much? How are you all tonight?
Not too shabby, really. Thank you for asking.
Agreed.
I'll make a motion to approve his $11,000 additional for the one-time data storage fee out of his perpetuation fund.
Second.
Was it a truck phone?
Yes. And it's delivered.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening. Keep us a good work. We're all coming.
I'm a public issue, too. This is for public accessibility.
Awesome. We like that kind of talk. Next this evening, we have our Highway Department.
I'm going to make a motion on all the additionals and transfers from the MVH and the local roads and street fund request for the Highway Department.
Second. First and second. Are there any questions?
What's going on, guys? Roads, roads, roads.
So we're looking like we're going to do some, some good paving and?
This is just all for the chip and seal process. This is what this is. I don't know if it's working or not, but?
You don't know if it's working or not?
Okay, it's working, yeah.
Oh, no, that's, sorry, man.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I don't want anybody to miss anything. It's, you know, it's exciting, so. Oh, yeah, we're looking to purchase our own chip and seal equipment, which we sold due to, a few years ago, due to the age of the equipment. It was 30 years old. So we're looking to get back and do our own chip and seal. Kind of brought some books, but the distributor operator, when we did our own chip and seal, would show how many roads we used to do when we did it on our own.
So those are from 1930, what?
No, this has actually started in 1990. I know it looks like it, but then we started, they started keeping track of all the roads we've chipped and sealed in 1990. The distributor operator actually keeps these. That's one of the pieces of equipment.
Vicki, for fun, can you tell us what's in these funds right now?
Sure. Okay. MVH fund, $1,156.02. And then local roads and streets is $975,728.76.
Gotcha. Where do we start the year with in these funds?
MVH had $907,000, and LRS had $1,083,000.
Okay.
So we had a very healthy carryover.
Gotcha. Thanks, Jim. Anyone else have any further questions?
You just, you think that this is going to save the county some money in the long run by purchasing our equipment again?
Yeah, by purchasing the equipment, just what we're going to save on subcontractors or private contractors. This equipment will pay for itself within six years. It's at the current level of chip and seal, but we obviously are going to do a lot more. So you can expect to see that recoup within probably four years.
Wow. How soon do you guys take delivery on them?
They said 90 days. Should be before the first three years what the manufacturer of equipment is saying.
Yeah, the asphalt zipper would be about 30 days. And then the other ones are custom made. They're, you know, they don't have them sitting on a shelf. So we'd have them by the spring.
Yeah, and the reason we're pushing for it this year is because with the different emissions, the tier three to the tier four, you're talking on that just asphalt zipper $40,000 increase in price just because of the emissions. And the other ones are between 30 and 50,000 for the other two, the chip spreader and the distributor. That's why we're pushing for it this year, so.
Sounds good to me, man. Right on.
So we're recycling our own asphalt on our roads with this machinery?
Correct. Yeah, that asphalt zipper will do that, but yeah. So that's, with this machine, with our, with our control over the machine that we would have come in and the contractor would have come in, would leave chunks up like this big. This stuff is fine. We could actually just roll this in and maybe not have to add the six, eight inches of stone we have been doing to make a road base stronger than what it already is, so.
Pretty remarkable.
You mentioned?
We're pretty excited about it.
You mentioned the other day about a stripper, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we kind of, we're in the process of just looking into our, we have a truck that's a flatbed F-450. We're looking at possibly getting our own stripper. We're just in the beginning stages of that, but it's just something we're looking into because with, I was reading an article about accidents, and with the striping on the roads, you can go, just by adding the center line and the fog line, you can reduce accidents up to 51%. So we definitely are looking very quickly into maybe getting one of these, but it probably won't be till next year. So we looked into it. The most expensive one was about $25,000. It's a palletized system. Alls you do is you go with your forks, load it on the truck, and when you're done using it, you unload it and set it back in the shed for the winter and then keep going, so.
I think that's really important because of the safety issues.
Yeah.
And I've had calls from that.
Yeah, we've had, we've had quite a few calls, so.
And I stripe the lines by Sylvia's house.
You can ride along.
Do we have any further questions? Hearing none. Our roll call, please.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, gentlemen.
So I heard that we're doing different record keeping now?
Yeah, we're going to turn this into an Excel spreadsheet. It's, yeah, it's going to be updated from 1936.
Those will be archived, though. Thank you very much. Have a good year. We'll see you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have our Health Department, looking to move some money from the immunization grant fund.
I'll make a motion on these reductions requests.
Move it through.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion or questions?
It's all just a immunization grant fund, right?
Right. You know, one immunization grant ends, and the funds that are applied for that particular grant are done the last day. So what we had the last time, when we were done in, on June 30th, one ran out, and the next one started June 1st, or July 1st, excuse me. So what we wanted to do is zero out the past. We didn't, any carryover was a false number because we didn't, it was, the dollars were done. So we were going to start fresh on July 1st. So that's what the reduction is, I talked to Vicki and Tony, and they said this is the way to do it, take away the, you know, the carryover, the leftover, and then start with a new, fresh, the grant. So that's what that is.
Down to 15 cents?
Yeah. I wish that $7,000 number was down to 15 cents. We're getting there.
Anyone else have any further questions? Comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next this evening, we have our Quarter.
I'm going to make a motion on the $500 transfer and the $75 transfer.
Second.
You got a first and a second. Any questions, comments? First the Quarter. He's waiting to see if he had to come down. Man, he's got a lot of questions to ask tonight.
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
Just making me go through the motions.
Basically, we were talking, and you said we've had one good quarter.
We have had one good quarter that I was surprised with, so I don't want to say that anything's turning the corner at this point in time, but I am cautiously optimistic.
That's excellent.
Good job. All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
I just wanted to make a mention that I think your office has been involved in some pretty horrific situations here with all of our drownings.
Well, since I've been sitting here in the past 10 minutes, we've had two people die in a train accident and one from an overdose. Mostly a jurn. So yes, we have. So up in Portage, by the way. Great, man. You can already hear that. Yeah. So that's where I'm going after this. Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm always a ray of sunshine, aren't I?
Keep up the good work, Chuck.
Thanks for having me.
All right, man. So we have our Development and Stormwater Management.
I'll make a motion on the three transfers, both from the Plan Commission Budget and Cune Bridge.
Second.
Buy a diesel truck. A plate compactor, huh?
Do you have this? Rich, do you have this? Do you want me to take this? Do you have this? Yeah, I'll take it if you want it. I'm just giving up so I can see what. Yeah, I saw it.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sexton?
What's a plate compactor?
It attaches end of our excavators. When they do the bridges, the box, we install box cover or do any kind of large covers.
Gotcha.
We have, only have a mini roller or like a small plate compact that you walk behind. And this is, puts on the end of excavator, so it actually, we don't have a person in the hole just in case. You have a plate compact to the end of an excavator and, instead of a human. And it, a lot safer and better than lowering our small roller in there. So that's, that's what that's for.
All right. That's my question.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Got our recorder this evening, looking for a transfer, or, excuse me, yeah, looking for an additional $8,500.
I will make a motion to approve the $8,500 from his perpetuation fund.
Yes.
What's in that fund, Vicki?
Where do we start the year with?
Yeah. $322,552, and then he's like?
How you doing, John?
Good.
Good job. Good, man.
Okay.
We'll be back next month. This, this appropriation is for just replacing microphone cabinets primarily because we've had them, they came over from the old courthouse when they moved over here in the 90s, and gosh knows how old these are. Couple of them are getting non-functional. It stores all the microphone we have going back to 1836, so.
Wow. Is that digitized yet?
So you got Sylvia's bird.
Oh, damn.
That was rough.
We knew it, man. Don't worry.
So it, and it's, and we need to have it by law, we have to have that, so it's, the best way we can take care of it is to get new cabinets. Next month, we got a couple other things we're going to be coming forward for, so. Got to, I have a couple more projects on the backburners I want to get going before I leave, so.
Anti-fatigued counter floor mat?
Those are, now, those are not, they're a small part of this. They're not that expensive, but they're cushioned.
You start, you start to fall asleep, they shock you. I'm wondering, yeah.
Well, it's not, the shocker's not as much for me. I mean, that's not as much for the galactic counter. No, they're just a little more cushioned because when you're standing at a counter for over an hour, sometimes at a time, you know, it does help. It really does help, so. And also, again, these, I think, came over from the old courthouse. We've got a lot of mileage on these babies, but it's time to get rid of them, so.
Cheryl, anyone else have any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
That's seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Good seeing you. Next, we have EMA, $100 from siren maintenance to water.
Make a motion to save the hundred bucks.
First and second. Any questions, comments?
You got to pay those sewage bills. It's no good if you don't.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it. Thank you.
Good.
Next, we've got parts in wreck. So we got a couple of transfers, general fund and non-reverting. I'm going to make a motion to approve both. Second. First and second. Any questions or comments? So we need a new portable toilet, eh?
Well, they're for porta-pots that folks rent through us for the events.
So is it, is this more than we anticipated, or is this?
Yes. Yep. Business has been good this year.
People using new toilets. I like that kind of stuff. Paying our sewage bill, getting toilets for people.
I'm bad at the good man.
Is this an audience or a jury? Come on. Stop. All right. Any other questions or comments? No, I think I've said it all. And you've said it all. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, have a good day.
Good night.
This evening, we have our animal shelter, looking to transfer funds to cover hourly payroll till the end of the year.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the $10,000 from Animal Shelter Stop.
Got a first, got a second?
Second.
Can I, can I ask how much is in there right now? How you doing? I'm asking her how much, I'm asking you how you're doing.
I'm doing great, how are you?
Good, thank you for asking.
So, we're a little shy on our hourly payroll. Is it, do we have additional people, less volunteers, what's?
Um, additional business.
That's good.
Which is always good. Our adoptions are up 57% from last year, so we obviously need more people to handle that, so it's a little bit of a shortfall from what we expected. This is our first full year in this new shelter, so.
So, let me ask you, like, so far year-to-date, obviously, you said we're up 57% than last year at this time, or we're up 57% than last year?
Um, than last year.
So, we're really gonna have a very good year?
We're gonna have a very good year.
So, do you know off the top of your head what our adoption numbers are right now?
Just dropping with.
Awesome, I'm just curious.
This is January through June of this year, okay? Intakes, a total of 438 animals came into the shelter.
Okay.
Okay, and 448 left the shelter, so.
And of those, how many were dogs, cats, turtles, horses?
Let's see. Well, we just do other, but we have dogs and cats.
We had a horse out there before.
Really? Dogs, we had 267 intakes, cats 153, and 18 other. And for dogs, adoptions, well, these are, we've had some, you know, they're split up between adoptions, transfers, that kind of thing, but total, we've had 268 dogs leave the shelter, 156 cats leave the shelter, and 16 other.
Now, do we still have animals going out to places like Paws and that sort of thing?
We do, but that's significantly dropped from before, because we have the ability to do more with them, do more training with them, you know, more medical, that kind of thing.
Well, that was one of the ideas with the new shelters, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, it's all working out very well.
Did you get rid of a parking out there? Seems like when I drive by, there's cars parked on the other side of the fence.
We do run out of parking out there, yeah, so.
Awesome.
It's, it is, which, which is why, you know, we have more employees, so less parking for people, but.
Are our volunteers up since the new shelter, about the same, or?
Not significantly like I would like to see, so we're working harder to get more volunteers in there and give them more responsibility, so hopefully eventually that will lower my hourly people cost.
Do you have a, any limit on those volunteers?
16 and up.
Cool. It's my questions.
Anyone else have any questions?
How's it, cities, do you have it broken down to how many animals you take, like from Chesterton, how many from Fort Worth?
Yeah, not on this sheet, but it is broken down. I can get that information to you if you would like.
I appreciate that.
It's a good question, actually.
Yeah, I can certainly make sure you get a copy of that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Eyes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Next up, we have the Memorial Upper House. Humanities Grant Fund.
Those you approve.
Second. This guy's always happy.
Yeah, he's sharp, he's dressed, excited to be here. This is awesome.
Good coffee, that's what it is.
Good actor.
Been at this for a while.
I'll make a motion on all those additionals.
Second.
Yeah, we've got a first and second, anyone have any questions?
So, what, all right, what big shows we got, tell us again, even if you already told us to give up or not.
I'll do what I can. We're opening up Sweeney Todd at the end of September. We are currently 40% sold on that show, so everything that we sell now ticket-wise is money in our pocket. Season ticket drive is going right now. We are on track to have our largest year. Last year, we sold $60,000 worth of season tickets. This year, we're tracking at 70,000 about, so is what we're projecting.
You guys still talking about that fashion show?
It's the fashion show, I think it's the Wizard of Oz, probably.
Either an eye roll?
It wasn't an eye roll.
You gotta wait till Ash writes it.
But things are going really, really well for us. Just to give some comparison, in 2014, we sold about $35,000 worth of season tickets, so to double that trend in four years, I'm really, really proud of my team to see what's happening.
It was the Wizard of Oz.
It was, it was. And it's just, it's really, really good, things are starting to happen. We are closing out the year with It's a Wonderful Life, the musical, that audition's in October, and gearing up for 2019, like I said, Shrek, Lacage au Fau, Mama Mia, and The Mousetrap, and Miracle on 34th Street, so giving the people what they want.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Really helping out a lot, so.
Big time.
Thank you.
Great.
You hope you did work.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover. Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Okay, seven to zero.
Thanks very much.
Next up this evening, we have adult probation. We got a couple Form 144s making some changes. How you doing this evening? What's going on?
So, basically, what you're seeing here is a result of us having preseason officers that have retired within the last three months, so what we're hoping to do is replace those seasoned officers with officers that might be a little more green and a little less moneyed. What we're doing right now is trying to shift some of the burden of salaries from one of our fee-based accounts to another fee-based account, so that's why you'll see the reduction in the admin account and then some of the increases in the PUF account. Those are both fee-based accounts, so money from those accounts come from fees that probationers pay.
I'll make a motion on both these 144s to approve.
Second.
We got a first and a second, anyone have any further questions? All right, hearing none, roll call please, Ms. Vicki.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening. So, we've got the prosecutor's office for a reduction. How you guys doing this evening? So, I talked to you guys.
Well, I managed to hire away an experienced prosecutor and brought him on, but obviously, Mike Durant was in the office for 25 years, so you can't pay a new guy regardless of their experience at the same amount, so the, the amount that I'm paying him is competitive, and it's basically what he was earning elsewhere, so I think it was a good catch for us. He's been a prosecutor for 20 years, knows his stuff, so I'm just asking to.
We do make a motion to approve the reduction request.
Second.
First and second, anyone have any further questions, comments? I have some questions about this fund, I think I'm gonna wait till budget time, because they're kind of global questions, not so much about this. Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call please, Ms. Vicki.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Have a good night.
All right, next up, we have us.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a first and second, anyone have any questions?
This is all, let's talk about this Riverboat Fund, so Vicki, give us a little bit of idea of how that fund is looking.
Well, we, as you know, the Riverboat Fund gets the money from the state distribution. We just recently received the county share of just over $405,000. It's also used to fund the undercover officers with the drug, drug unit. So, right now, we have a cash balance of $253,300 in it, but we still need to pay the undercover expenses through the rest of the year, and that is around $90,000 that we still know that's going to be coming out of there.
So, this is our first half of the longevity, then?
Well, you might remember that you passed the longevity policy last year.
So, it's the first two-thirds or whatever.
Exactly. It now is tied, the payout is tied to the month that you appropriate the money.
So, let's talk about the math, so.
Yes.
With, with what's left in Riverboat, if we're talking about the last bit of the longevity of the last one-third, give or take, and the remaining undercover task force money, how short will we be?
For longevity, this payout, or for the rest of the year?
The rest of the year.
Okay.
Take a virtual trip ahead in time.
Yeah, our estimate of longevity is going to be about $345,000, but we always try to estimate upwards, just in case of people who bridge longevity, just in case if we missed someone. So, it looks like we're going to need, this payout, we're going to need about, hold on. Well, we're going to need what we advertised, which is pretty much the whole apart, yeah, the 240 from the Riverboat and the.
How short will the Riverboat Fund be if we were talking about paying the undercover drug unit and all of longevity, which we know we can't do?
Right, we can't.
How short are we? That's my question.
Yeah. About $220,000 for the rest of the year.
Gotcha.
We'll have better figures once we actually run all the longevity calculations, if you approve this.
Right.
And then we'll know exactly how much we're paying up per employee.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anyone else on the council have any questions? Hearing none, our roll call, please, Ms. Vicki.
You should roll call.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
So, this next one, we're picking up some of the remainder of the slack.
Exactly.
And so, we're moving $100,000. That's 240, yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, anyone have any questions or comments? All right.
What did we do last year, Vicki? Refresh my memory, didn't we take some money out of Seated or something to sort out?
Yes, and that's where, how we've been paying out longevity for the past few years, supplementing it with another fund, either Seated, usually it's Seated or General Fund.
Okay. So, I might understand then that we're suggesting General Fund tonight and not Seated?
Yes.
Why's that?
I think that came from the commissioners.
Turn to the clerk.
Yeah, they're on the panel, yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Do you know why we're taking the $100,000 out of General Fund? We don't have money, we don't have available money in Seated, which I know the answer to that, but let's see what kind of answer you get.
I don't know how to answer your question. I mean, I think the answer was we were scrambling at the last 24 hours to figure out what to appropriately advertise, and just not sure all the ends met, and.
So, at the end of the day, it got, this one got done in, in the General Fund, so. I don't think there's any more grand answer than that.
It was pretty grand, the way you made your approach, the whole room looked over to you.
Well, you know, I got to watch you for years, so.
That was a big entrance, man. So, really, the, where we're going with this is, the decision for General Fund was that to get to Seated, we would need to have the commissioners vote on it as well?
Yeah, well, not vote on it, but just.
Approve it.
Approve it.
Or make the request, and it was just a question of timing.
It was timing. It's always, and I think in the past, I don't know if it was last year, but.
We've kind of.
Normally, a Riverboat covered at least one payment.
Right.
I don't know if it did last year, but the second payment normally was the one that was coming, that wasn't being covered.
Right.
And then that one was coming out of the unallocated Seated, or we were doing the whole transfer around it in November, December, to figure out where that was coming from, normally, again, out of Seated.
See, my concern is that, obviously, and this is not necessarily a discussion that needs to get too deep tonight, but I mean, as we approach our budget session, as you may or may not recall, we talk in terms of, you know, rollover General Fund money and all that kind of thing, how we start the year, and how we finish the year, and we're eating into it, so we need to be very cognizant of additionals from the General Fund, because we are carving away at that safety net.
And what's this, what are we projecting the second longevity payment to be, roughly?
Roughly 220.
Yeah, so, my guess is that's gonna have to come from a combination of what can be transferred around within some commissioner budgets, and then potentially out of unallocated Seated, but I think part of the questions that was coming up was we're around 2.3 in unallocated Seated?
Yes, 2.3.
So, it was a question of?
Well, and in the end, we, we've typically talked about unallocated Seated as a safety net, we've talked about carryover, General Fund is a safety net, and it's probably six in one, a half dozen the other, but we just have to, as those funds get a little bit tight, I don't want to see our, for example, our General Fund, you know, carryover be, you know, 200,000 or.
Sure.
20, 36,000, god, it was one year.
Well, and I think you guys have been clear that you wanted about 2 million in unallocated Seated as a safety net, that's kind of been the floor there, so. This first one's difficult because of the Riverboat money becoming less available, I guess is the best way to put it, and, and the timing that this payment, because of the, of the way we're doing it now, this payment is slightly higher than it was normally from years past.
And when we talk about it, when we, when we talk about longevity in our budget session, I would suggest that we talk about how to budget it, whether we want it, and if we do want it, how, how badly do we want it, and how are we gonna pay for it? Because the fund that was available to, like Scott eloquently just stated, the, the Riverboat money covered it, so it was an easy pot for us to provide this extra benefit to our employees by way of the longevity, so we probably need to talk about, as, as again, as we're hitting harder into our General Fund or the unallocated Seated that we want to keep reserved, we need to be very aware of, of these General Fund hits.
Well, and also, just for, the first, the first longevity payment is the most difficult one, because it's the hardest one to kind of look into the magic glass and determine where everything is. The second one is a little bit, it's substantially easier, because you have a much better idea.
It's easier to predict, but it's not necessarily easier to fund.
True, but my point is, is that even if in the budgeting session it was possible to get the first payment in, that gets us into that November, December timeframe, when it's a lot easier to look into budgets and see how everything's been going and transfer.
And if you're budgeting for it, Vicki can pay it then in the next month.
And then that gives her an opportunity to be a little bit, and then that's, then that first half of longevity would be then basically ending in June.
Right.
Which would make this number smaller.
Yes.
And then it would, it doesn't make the overall longevity smaller, but when you get to the end, it's still easier.
You put a sack in January, how many potatoes you put in June, and how many you got in September.
It's just easier to find the money.
In the end, it's your, your amount of potatoes in that sack, my man.
True.
But I, I like the way you look at it, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but I, all part of the entrance, I'm doing all.
Well, hey, like I said.
Did you lose? Oh, well. No, it was Scott and I started. Yeah. Well, I'm sorry to, to bore you with the detail of the budget numbers, Mr. Rivas. In the future, we'll. I was just happy to get going on it, yeah. All right.
Does anyone else have any questions for Scott?
I don't.
You two are done.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks a lot, Big Scott, I appreciate you coming back, means a lot to me.
Ms. Vicki, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Next up this evening, we have our second reading.
Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriate in the annual budget, therefore be it ordained, resolved by the Porter County Council of Porter County, therefore the expenses of the taxing unit following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Okay. General Fund, Fund 1,000, $100,000. Local Roads and Streets, 1169, $800,000. Highway Fund, 1176, $105,000. Recorders Perpetuation Fund, 1189, $8,500. Riverboat Fund, 1191, a total of 166,390. Surveyor Perpetuation Fund, 1202, $11,000. Prosecute Deferral Fund, a reduction of 3,776. Upper House Humanities Grant, uh, $5,000. And Health Immunization Grants, a reduction of $9,441.57. And that concludes second reading.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve second reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, we've got attorney report?
No news is good news. I don't have anything new to report today. I preemptively, I know that, um, on the, next on the agenda is the review of the levy limits and tax caps. The statute was amended, I think, in 16.
Harold, before we jump to the next thing, can I just ask a quick question on your report? I know that we've discussed the possibility of you meeting with Scott to follow up on that lease discussion. Have you guys had a chance to do that yet?
We, we have talked about it, and there was, um...
You don't have to give us the details.
Yeah, we have, we have, yes, we did, we did.
Thank you.
The, um, and the, the levy limits, the statute just requires that the council review the levy limits, which Vicki, um, I think provided to us through, I think, V.L.G.F., is that right? The numbers came from them?
Yes.
Yeah, and, uh, the council just needs to, uh, if, review those, and then we have an option to make recommendations to the local units. And in years past, we've just made a recommendation that they stay within their maximum levies.
And if they don't, we're gonna give him a strong finger wagging. I like it. Vicki, do we have to read those, or just review?
No, you could just review the numbers. If you look at the max levies, pretty much all of them are going up because the, the levy growth quotient went up 3.4% this year, which is lower than it did this year. And then, the estimated tax caps that the state is estimating are all over the board. Some units are expected to have a harder hit next year, and some are expected to have less of a hit. But keep in mind, these are just estimates only.
And do you need a roll call on that, or no, just, just speaking? I'll make a motion to approve it.
I think in the last we have...
When in doubt, when in doubt, make the vote.
Yes.
We've got a motion to approve and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
I have a question for Harold, actually. As we talked previously about also looking into other potential lease obligations that we have as a county to make sure that we don't have anything that all of us are fully aware of and informed about, and have we had an opportunity to dig into that material, and what have we found out?
We, we have, Scott and I have talked about that. There's a, a, a plan for, for he and I to sit down and, and go through potentially the, the leases, the contracts that issue that were raised. But we did talk about it last month, and the plan is, is sometime in the next month or so to go through those and have those ready for the budget sessions.
And, uh...
Or even, I mean, prior to that, I mean, we can certainly submit those.
Which budget session that starts the middle of September, would, will you be prepared to have your discovery by then?
I, I would hope so. I, I, I don't wanna make a promise that I can't keep, but I know Scott and I did talk about that, and, and I would hope to have that for you.
Certainly, the sooner, sooner the better, and, uh, we obviously wanna know what else might be out there that we're not completely aware of or familiar with.
Yes, yep, absolutely, yep.
Anyone else have questions, perhaps? Yeah, now we're to the, any other matter that may properly become before the council this evening? Um, this evening, I know we have Senator Karen Talion, Roger and Tim from Ogden Dunes that would like to make a quick presentation. Good evening, guys. Senator?
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing us to take a few minutes of your time tonight. My name is Tim Nelson, I'm a town council member for the town of Ogden Dunes. We are here as a follow-up to the letter I sent to the council at the end of July. The purpose of this is to bring your attention to the, um, to the emergency conditions that exist at the Portage National Lakeshore Beach in the town of Ogden Dunes Beach. We want this to be on the county council's radar. Um, as you saw in the letter, we're, we're also requesting assistance with, with funding for some short-term beach restoration efforts. I'm gonna turn it over to Senator Talion here and to Roger Howell, who's the chair of the town's beach nourishment committee, to give you a brief overview. And once again, thank you for a few moments of your time tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Karen Talion, and I know most of you. I am the state senator for, um, this district for basically, um, everything north of County Road 600 North in Porter County, goes into Michigan City. Um, we have a beach problem, we have a beach problem, not just in Portage and Ogden Dunes. We have other problems with some of our other beaches in Porter County, along Long Beach. Um, but I wanna bring to your attention some of the, uh, significant damage that we've had in Porter, uh, I'm sorry, in, at the Portage Beach, and then extending down into Ogden Dunes. Um, I'm not sure if all of you are aware of the history. When I graduated from law school in 1990, I was working on a beach erosion case, okay? And, and that wasn't the first one. So, this has been a problem since the Port of Indiana built the port in the late 60s. Um, as you may know, sand travels around the lake in a kind of clockwise direction. And, you know, all the beach sand is replenished until you put in a stop arm. And the stop arm, we, we know, are the breakwaters that exist in various places. So, for example, in Portage, we have the big break wall that was constructed as part of the Port of Indiana in, in the late 60s. We also have the smaller break wall that was constructed at the mouth of Burns Ditch, um, maybe some years later than that. Just bringing you some pictures. And, and some of you may have seen these before or in the paper. This is a picture of Ogden Dunes Beach just a couple of years ago. There's kids playing on the beach, the beach is, you know, is not in bad shape. This is the way it looked. This picture is a year old. So, as you see, we have no beach in Ogden Dunes now. Up until this point, which was, like I said, last year, it was a few houses in. This year, we're 40% into the town, that we have no more beach anymore. And it's not just Ogden Dunes Beach. It's Portage Beach. There is the Portage Pavilion that was built with RDA money just, uh, you know, when? 10 years ago?
Yeah, 1980, or, excuse me, 2008.
Um, this is their handicap access pavilion, you know, staging where, that's now fall, that, this fell into the lake last year. It's still sitting there, and Roger has some additional pictures of the way things look right now, where there, there, there's just nothing. And so, here's where we are. Because all the sand backs up on the, on the east side of the breakwalls, it has to be moved. Um, and it's done, uh, on a periodic basis, and I can't tell you, sometimes it's a year, sometimes it's two or three years, it all depends on storm and, and storm movement. But the sand is dredged from one side and, and brought over and placed along the beach. I was successful in getting a, a bill through the, the general assembly this year that said that any sand that you dredge has to be put on the beach. The Army Corps is not so sure that that applies to them, but in any case, um, we're, we're trying to get the sand on the beach, and for this year, we had a proposal that we, instead of, instead of dumping the beach, the sand parallel to the beach all along the lakeshore, they would bring the sand in sort of perpendicular to the beach, dump it right in the place that we call the hole, uh, which is just the scoured-out area at the far end of the Portage Beach. And, and then, once we get the sand there, then it naturally will move down. Problem is, we can't get it there. Um, they're in the middle of dredging, the water's not deep enough for them to bring the boats and do a clamshell open. And our only, uh, choice right now is to do what we call dump and pump. The guys bring in the sand on the barges, dump it out, and then we bring in another, another set of material, a pump, uh, that will pick that sand up and basically move it over into the beach. I have been to, to the State House, I have tried to get money to help us do, do this. I was supposed, I thought I had a meeting with the governor last Friday, but when I got down there, I found that the governor was gone, and I met with, uh, three of his staff members. They know the problem. In the meantime, I think what we want from you, um, first of all, we want you to be aware that this is a serious problem. This pavilion, uh, this could, pavilion could be jeopardized this winter. And, and 10 million dollar project could be in the way.
You're saying that could wash away?
Well, I'm saying it, I don't know that it'll all just wash away, but you could seriously undermine the foundations so that, so that the building could be destroyed. So, I want everybody to be aware of this. The second thing is, um, we want your help to make this pitch to the State House. We have an emergency situation. I think they have emergency money. I would like the county council to write a letter, make a declaration, whatever it is that you procedurally need to do, to, to declare that we've got an emergency up there, and, and let me take that downstate to ask for money from their Homeland Security Emergency Funds. And finally, third, just as, as a, as a backup, um, if, and this may not be the right body, but I know it's some of the same members. You have funds, interest funds from the county hospital foundation, if I have that name correctly. And, you know, we, we would, if, if all else fails, we would like to get some help from that group. I'm not, like I said, I'm not in front of that body right now, but, but a lot of, you know, you guys are, are the same members, so we are making you aware of this.
Actually, all of us.
All, all, okay.
Yeah, and we sent you some photos, I don't know that we need to go through all those, but in terms of the, the structure, the, the lakefront area was recaptured with over 15 million dollars. Not all of it for the pavilions, some of it was for the roads that aren't really at risk now. But the dune that's protecting the water from going around the back of the pavilion is 12 feet wide at the top and 50 feet wide at the bottom. And the, uh, sand facing the lake is a vertical pile of sand. Sand doesn't stay like that, it, it's gonna fall. If it goes through there, moving water is gonna be behind the pavilion right at its foundation. So, it's, it's a highly risky situation. I, I, I did talk with, uh, the city of Portage to ask them to declare an emergency. Ogden Dunes has, and the National Park Service has posted emergency conditions. They shut down the, the, uh, access ramp, and they've actually put a temporary ramp to get, or not a ramp, it's a tiny trail, but it goes over that last remaining dune. So, uh, it's, it's, uh, you know, if you were to go and look at it, you would see that, you know, one more storm or two more storms really puts that at risk. And, you know, what we're looking to do is, is do about a $500,000 dredge to get the material up onto the beach. The beach has collapsed a couple times, and was rebuilt, only with sand from Burns Harbor. It, it didn't come back by itself, and it's in that same situation. What we're looking to do is get a few more years of protection in front of that beach while we work on the long-term study that's funded through state funding and the federal government to put a longer-term flow solution in. So, this, um, you know, is intended to really help get through the winter and hopefully a few more years while we get something more substantial in place. And, and we're working with multiple parties.
Can you talk a little bit about the RDA real quick because, so you've approached them, I assume, because they're the ones that funded this project, right?
Uh, we've had a few meetings with, with multiple parties, where the city of Portage, Park Service, DNR, RDA was there, uh, the port was there as well, uh, Ogden Dunes as well, Senator Talion as well. And, um, uh, we really haven't gotten into this particular issue, they're aware of it. They generally like to fund infrastructure and not maintenance, is what they, they've tended to say.
Is what?
In the trade business. They've leveraged a lot of their funds in that Nicky track project. They're gonna be hard for us to get money to...
No, that's right. I, I mean, I, I know that...
I just asked to explain, just 'cause they explore all options, you know.
Just for clarification purposes, who actually owns the property?
Which property, well, there's a number of ownerships, so let me, let me start, let me start with this one. So, we have, the Port of Indiana is over here, okay? That's owned by the State of Indiana Port Commission. Um, just to the east of the port, we have ArcelorMittal Steel. And then, as you come down here, uh, this section here, so there's the port break wall, here's Burns Ditch, this section is owned by U.S. Steel, the portion that used to be National Steel. Uh, then there's First Waterway, affectionately known as the Ditch. And then there, then this portion is owned by the National Park Service, which is, uh, it's owned by the Park Service, maintained by the Portage Parks Department. And then, um, I can't tell where it is here, but, but someplace right along here begins the town of Ogden Dunes.
And my, maybe a better question would be, is any of it actually owned by Porter County?
Is anything owned by Porter Co...uh, no, I, not to the best of my knowledge.
And who owns the pavilion?
Uh, the pavilion, the legal situation on the, on the pavilion is kinda strange. I think that it actually belongs to the National Park Service, but it's under memorandum agreements with the city of Portage.
So, Karen, you have litigated cases on the lakefront. And my family owned a restaurant that eventually the lake took into the lake, and I mean, there's been other...
Were you the Red Lantern Inn?
Yeah, that was.
Oh, we loved it.
So, when you start, you start looking at knowledge on the lakefront, we know that the water levels are at current, like, 20-year high, right? 40-plus inches above what the mean was even 10 years ago. So, um, in those litigation cases, have you guys ever won anything against the mill for placing that breakwater out there? And where is the mill at on their obligation to replenish that sand? Have they been approached? Is there a situation where they would pay for the transfer of the sand? And being involved in that, like, I've built breakwalls and done some of that stuff. Is there a plan to build a breakwall outside that facility to maybe withstand some of these storms? Because we know that's a reoccurring problem. How many times have we replenished the sand in that area, what you guys are asking?
All right, that's a whole lot of...
You just have 10 questions.
Yeah.
So, but back in the 80s, we've done several, there were several attempts, right? In early 90s of replenishing the sand or doing something on that lakefront.
Don't we have the replenishment ones first?
Uh, yeah, you can go ahead and talk about...
So, so the beach, uh, so the structure first went in in 1966, and it's, and it's been a virtual 100% sand block since. And then, there's a whole bunch of Army Corps, National Park Service, and Indiana, DNR studies, and I think they've, they've really kinda settled and are all agreed. Um, the beach collapsed in the 80s, that was the first time. So, that was roughly 20 years after the structure went in. And that was in the mid 80s, it was a higher like, a lake level, but it had been declining the whole time. The only way it came back, it didn't come back when the lake went down, because it was high from the 80s into the 90s. It came back when they built the Burns Small Boat Harbor, and they put 126,000 cubic yards of sand. I can confirm the numbers exactly later, but, um, onto the beach. And that lasted roughly 10 years. So, in the mid 90s, and the lake was high from the 80s through the 90s, the whole period. In the 90s, again, it collapsed around 96 again. And, uh, the state actually put a sea, the seawall corner in that you saw in the picture around Ogden Dunes. Ogden Dunes had done some before, but it reinforced, and it was a much stronger wall. Um, and then, the beach came back in 2000. It was low, and it had not come back, and that's when the low-leg period started. But, uh, the Army Corps dredged the Burns Small Boat Harbor, then it put 143,000 cubic yards of sand on the beach. Uh, and that lasted until roughly 14. The lake was low the entire period. But the counter, the, the corner got exposed again, uh, in, in the Halloween storm. But in 14, it had, it had come back out. And from 2000 to, 2014, it was all low lake level. Clearly, the lake's gone up, and it, it makes it worse, uh, for sure, but, um, the, the ongoing issue is that there's no sand coming to the beach. There's supposed to be 200,000 cubic yards of sand moving by that beach every year, and some of it sticks to it. It's all on the other side of the port, or virtually all.
I'm just comparing you guys to, you know, I'm an avid voter, and I go down the lakefront all the time, and almost none of the homes on the lakefront currently have sand exposed. I mean, you reach out to Michiana Shores, or Long Beach, or Grand Beach, a lot of those areas, there's nothing but seawalls left on the outside of those houses. And, and my question is, if we know that there's a guilty party, and obviously you guys have done some homework on this, and you just told me that several agencies concurred that this issue was brought about by that breakwall, then why haven't they accepted responsibility for that?
There's a long-term study that the Army Corps did, and they did a reconnaissance study in 10. And the next step is actually for the state to sign up to their share of that next phase, which is to assign cost, blame, and do the solution design. So, they've documented the root cause, they've documented the stakeholders, uh, they've documented four potential solutions to build out, um, and they've documented an approach to go through multiple years to, to work that out. The Army Corps would be the lead agency on that, but the state actually needs to make a formal request and, and allocate money to that. They're, they're, you know, and that's sort of going the administrative side. Have we been trying to stay on the administrative side and do this the right way versus going on the judicial side? It just, you know, that was not...
There's no litigation?
There's no...
Pending litigation?
Hang on, uh, not exactly. There's no, there is a pending administrative proceeding, and that has to do with... There's no, there is a pending administrative proceeding, and that has to do with, well, let me go back. So right now, there were basically three entities that dredge. The Army Corps will dredge the entrance to the port. Arcelor Middle dredges its entrance where their sand, where sand comes in and builds up around their freshwater intake. And then NIPSCO, a little farther east, you know where Porter's Beach is, while NIPSCO used to dredge there, but, and we, so the last couple of years, when NIPSCO applied for their, for the renewal of their permit, we made objections. And basically, what NIPSCO said is, we're gonna withdraw our permit because we're closing this plant down and we're not going to dredge anymore. That means that basically, that whatever sand they removed will now have to be removed by the other two. There is an administrative proceeding right now because Middle has applied for their renewal. We have filed an objection, and that's still kind of on hold, waiting to see what happens this summer.
What do they do with the sand they remove?
Oh, they bring it, and they bring it around, but they don't put it...
You say there, you're talking about the mill?
I'm talking about Arcelor, yeah. So this sort of shows lake levels over a number of period of years and where the sand was on the beach. But the bottom line, really simply, right here is Burns Ditch, just to orient you. The sand needs to go right there. It needs to go right there because if it starts there, it will naturally flow west. Right now, they're putting the sand out here, okay? It doesn't get close enough. And all the sand that's put out here ends up in Miller. And that's where it all is right now.
Right. And both the Army Corps and then the Park Service study said, you know, when you put it offshore, it's not effectively nourishing the beach. The only way to do it is to actually put it onshore. Arcelor's current permit allows them to do it offshore, which is what they're working to do. Now, Karen recently worked to get the law passed that the sand needs to be on the beach. And so that's what we've, have an administrative proceeding for.
Were there concerns where you guys are dredging that, there'd be some heavy metals or solids in there that would be toxic directly applied to the beach?
Let me just say that before anyone gets a permit to dredge, the sand, there's a two-part process. The first part is that the water quality, sand quality, has to be okayed under IDAM, Department of Environmental Management. And then, once that happens, then the dredging permit actually comes through DNR. So to answer your question, all that sand that's like right in the harbor channel, we know we don't want that. Nobody wants that. But the rest of the sand has been deemed to be clean.
Do you have an idea of what we've already spent in replacing or replenishing that sand?
We, we meaning...
Meaning a government entity or the other existing agencies that put that sand in there, where we just claimed that we had, what, $200,000 cubic yards?
Yeah, we have some numbers. I don't know that we have the cost, but we do have the amount that they've moved. And I'm just going off the top of my head, so I don't have all the numbers right. But about $10 million cubic yards has been blocked by the port. Almost $9 million cubic yards is sitting on the east side of the port that should've gone down past these beaches. And just to give you a perspective, that's like five Lucas Oil Stadiums. It's a huge amount of sand. They've moved about 1.3 million cubic yards around and placed it nearshore, and all along Ogden Dunes, and a little bit in front of the Portage Lakefront. They generally don't go in front of the Portage Lakefront because they're worried about shutting down the Small Boat Harbor. So they usually do it in front of Ogden Dunes. And the only sand that's been placed on those, on the beach are the two that I mentioned, 126,000 in '94, excuse me, 84 in '85, and then 143,000 in 2000. So, you know, of the sand that's been placed on the beach, it's like 3% of the sand that should've gone by the beach, right? It's, there's just a huge amount of sand that's deficit. And what we're trying to accomplish here is protect the structures that are there. There's a huge investment, you know, get a few more years, and there's something more substantial that needs to be done. We've got a lot of documentation. We've had a lot of people out to talk. With the studies that were recently done that are more definitive, you know, pre-2010, you probably could've debated, you shouldn't have, but you probably could've debated who was at fault and what were the cause and what was the solution. The Army Corps study in '10 really kinda set that all. And so now we have a solution to go after, whereas before 2010, there wasn't, there wasn't one, and everybody could kinda talk about one. Now there's four that are defined, and the path forward is clear. We have to take that step. But it'd be good not to lose the structures before that step's taken.
So if you need something from us to encourage the state to free up some of that money, I'm all for that. If you need a resolution or something.
Harold, can you write something up? I mean, it's something you probably want immediately, though?
It's something that we need last week.
Some kind of resolution? I understand that we have nothing to vote on in terms of a resolution. I mean, is there a way? I mean, if you don't support it, just say it, and you don't have to put your name on it, that's fine, but...
I will absolutely support a resolution. I think that the State of Indiana, it's been said that they have a $2 billion surplus. I think that this is an emergency, that they should, you know, supply, in my feeling, they wanna save their, the property that they've put into this. Didn't you say it was $20 million that they, or how much they...
I think that building was around 10...
10 million?
Yeah. I don't know exactly. I don't remember exactly, Sylvia.
But I would absolutely support a resolution.
Just write a letter, then, if you can't, I mean...
We don't have time for a resolution?
I mean, a resolution should be voted on, I guess. I don't know.
You really need the resolution in front of you, because I'm already...
Right. That's what I always, that's what my concern was, is just the language of it. I can certainly...
So can you write a letter? And whoever wants to put their name on that letter, they can confirm it when you put it out for rough draft, you know? If they don't want...
And I think what I, I think what I would suggest is that, and I don't know exactly how this works, frankly, Harold, I'm gonna count on you. I don't know whether the county, you know, whether you have to declare an emergency there.
We can't, to be honest.
That'd be a commission.
That's the commissioners' issue.
That's the commissioners?
Yep.
All right. But I think we need you to recognize that there's an emergency and that, and that, you know, ask the state to send this for, you know, to get emergency funds.
First of all, how much money are you needing?
All right, so what we have right now, what we expect right now, is approximately 100,000 cubic yards of sand this summer. If we can still get that sand, that's about what they expect to move. And it costs, the cost is somewhere between $4 and $5 a yard to move it. So we need $400,000 to $500,000 to move all of that sand. Hopefully, if we did that, that would be a solution that would be in place for four to seven years.
You have a plan that, I mean, contractors that are dredging?
Yes, we have a plan. Yes, we have a plan. Roger's talking everyone?
Yeah, we have a firm quote from a contractor.
So we're a board, we're a board that can send a letter, we're a board that can write and pass a resolution in support of your funds from the state. We are not a board that, on its own, can contemplate expending foundation funds. That would require a foundation vote.
Right.
So we can't do that, but just to cut to the chase...
We can't declare an emergency, so that's something you might wanna approach the commissioners about, if that's something you think you need with that regard. But we will send a letter, like Dan said. I personally, I'm gonna reach out to our RDA rep and have a conversation with him to see, I mean, that's a $10 million building there, that if they're not interested in that thing being undercut, then I don't know, they need to get their head out of their ass, so...
Yeah, and I don't, we've had these conversations. They've recognized that this is a problem. They don't want the building in the lake either. But we have been trying to sort of hurt a tax, as it will, you know, to see where we can get money from.
Yeah, I think to Jeremy's point, you know, every year, Porter County taxpayers throw millions of dollars to the RDA 25. So it's probably not a bad idea for them to pony up and send a little something for this.
What is? Karen, you are a representative down there. What has happened down there when you've approached them about this issue?
About the RDA or the state?
No, the state, the sand issue.
I went to the governor last fall before the 2018 session. I gave him this entire presentation, and they said they would, you know, they would try to help us. So they did two things. They came, they talked to their engineers at the Board Commission and came up with us idea about how they would bring the boats in perpendicular, get them in closer to the beach and dump the sand, but it didn't work. The governor also did sign the bill that required dredged sand to go back on the beach. I have spoken to DNR. It's not, the DNR believes that this is in the purview of the Indiana Ports Commission, that that's whose jurisdiction this really belongs to, because they're, you know, they've got the structure, they've got the, they're doing the dredging. So I have tried to talk to the Ports Commission, and they're very cordial, but I'm not getting any money from them. I'm not getting any, they're cordial, but we get no relief. And...
Well, if you could just give their sand, I mean...
I know. And it's all about that extra $500,000. That's what this is about. Because they're, they agree, oh, yeah, we need it, we need it there. But who's gonna pay the money? And that's what this whole thing is about, is who's gonna pay that incremental cost? Because keep in mind, you know, this is sort of a three-part deal. We've got an emergency, we've got a short-term solution, and we've got this long-term solution that involves this study by the Army Corps. The long-term solution, it could be 10 years.
What about our congressman? He's such a responsible and receptive person.
I have talked to Pete about this a number of times. The National Park Service will tell you that they don't have money to make up that extra increment of money.
So I guess the long and short, because we're getting there, is we, you know, I, for myself, I'm happy to sign on to encouragement and request for funds from the state. I'm also to sign on to any correspondence we might send to the RDA. As Jeremy correctly put it, $3.5 million a year goes to them from Porter County, you know, send some of that back so we can fix this problem in Porter County. I'm happy to do all those sorts of things. We're not in a position tonight to talk about money, because this board isn't the one that can do that on its own. So that would be my suggestion, that we craft a couple of letters, send them out. You wanna sign it, sign it. You don't, don't. Let's send something to the RDA, send something to the, for Senator Italian to deliver downstream, and see how the horses run.
I would echo that, Dan. I mean, I would sign my name if that was necessary.
I think it might be, it might be important to reiterate, and Dan, I appreciate what you're saying, that the regional ask of $292,000, we don't have as a council. As a county, we don't have it. Through the foundation, that also would be a possibility, but a very remote one, based on the direction of the foundation over the previous meetings that we've had. So in terms of verbal support, encouragement for other people to get involved to fix the problem, we identify that there is a problem. We appreciate the problem, and we would encourage someone to fix it. Unfortunately, from a monetary standpoint, this isn't the group that's gonna be able to fix it.
So that sounds like a plan, if we can do that, that'd be great.
Harold, go take care of it. Write some letter.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Keep us posted, if it's all...
Yeah, please.
One other thing before we go with them, just something I might even wanna think about. When we go into the budget sessions, I would like the, any elected official to be prepared, or department head, to be prepared to talk about comp time that their employees have accumulated. And looking at some of these comp time reports, candidly, there's one or two that shock the conscience. And I'm going to be expecting that the elected official or department head be prepared to discuss why they would allow the comp time to get that high. And I want to put everybody on notice that, gosh, I didn't have enough people, or, gosh, we've just had so much work, isn't gonna suffice, that we've not been told that comp time is becoming an issue by these elected officials. And waiting 12 months into it, 13 months into it, and then we're just hit with these ridiculous comp time numbers, is not gonna hold water with me. I'm going to be asking the tough questions, and I'm going to be expecting the answers. And if I don't like the answers, I'm going to be digging into people's budgets to buy out some of these comp times or to deal with their staff that they're gonna have to start giving time off.
Dan, should we have, do I have to add a letter? Since all the department heads are here?
Yes.
Does anyone else have anything else?
Listen to it, Jared.
You got a motion?
Okay.
All who are in favor, simply by the saying aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, say aye.